That works, Alex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to put my microphone on. Okay, announcements. Thursday, March 29th at 6:30, there's going to be a non-public meeting with the town council in the chambers. And then at 7 o'clock, Tuesday, April 10th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is voting day. The voting sites are at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman. Please contact the town clerk's office at 424-3651 or visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State to find out which specific polling location you are assigned to. There's also a regular town council meeting on Thursday, April 12th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Helene?
This Saturday, March 24th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m., the library is hosting the annual Free Computer Clinic, facilitated by the Michael Lovrhm Memorial Foundation. Visit the library's website to register for a time slot. These volunteers are prepared to answer any questions of your technology, answer any of your technology questions, which I'm sure do not relate to you guys, because I'm sure you're well advanced beyond most of us. Despite the snow, the 26th Annual Easter Egg Hunt at Wasserman Park is still on for this Saturday, March 24th. The event runs from 10:00 o'clock to 10:30 a.m., so grab your snow boots and your Easter baskets and prepare for some fun. Visit the Parks and Recreation website at www.parksandrec.org to view the egg hunt times for each age group. And I believe Matt said, I heard Matt telling Peter, that they have somewhere around 1,500 eggs. 12,000? Oops, I was off a little bit. 12,000? Oh, my goodness. I guess you guys ought to go, huh? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I did, yes. Yes, John?
I just wanted to amplify your talk about the voting booths and locations. We haven't changed the locations in the last several elections, so if you voted recently, go to the same place. But if you haven't voted in a while, you might want to check and make sure you know where you're going. But there has been no change in the locations.
Correct.
Nancy?
Yes?
I just wanted to jump in and say thanks to DPW these past two weeks, the storms. They've done an excellent job in keeping our roads clear, kind of unexpected, but especially that last one with a lot of snow. So they did a great job, so I think they should do a little bit of credit.
Very good. I agree. I did fail to mention also that Finley Rothhouse, Councilor's Finley Rothhouse and Will Boyd have been excused from the meeting this evening, therefore the two empty chairs. Okay, PFOA update. A couple of things. Yesterday, there was a meeting held at Litchfield, being held by the DES related to a consent decree that was completed between DES and St. Cobain that can, it does involve homes in Merrimack, Bedford, and Litchfield that were in what they call the disputed area. Those were homes that the DES and St. Cobain were discussing about whether they should be hooked up to water, municipal water, and the decree does say that they're going to, and St. Cobain is going to pay for it. On our website, we have the list of every home that is involved in that situation, which is a disputed home that will be hooked up to water. Let's see. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I don't know, did you mention the DOT meeting on the, I got a notice on the 27th, March 27th?
That's changed.
Oh, that is, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I believe it's going to be May 1st, but we're in. They're widening, there are sections of Route 3 that are going to be widened, three lanes, which everyone in this town knows, oh yeah, they should have done that a long time ago. But what they have to do involves Nashua, Merrimack, and Bedford. And what they had set up is a meeting to be able, it's a public hearing. But because of the MVD meeting, that's Tuesday, they've changed that, and they're going to have it May 1st. So there'll be new flyers coming out, but thank you. But that does lead me into the MVD meeting that is going to be occurring on Tuesday, the 27th, at the James Mastercola, not only for election of commissioners, but also to vote on the articles that have been developed for MVD. And that information is also on our website, the articles, if you want to be able to read it. And I think it's 7 o'clock it begins, right?
Yes.
The meeting. Okay, and I believe that's all. Was there anything else, Pete, from your end?
No, we haven't met with the Citizens for Clean Water Group due to the fact that we were all waiting for last night's meeting.
Okay, okay, excellent. Okay, Highway Garage Project update. Jackie, anything, or Paul?
Oh, yes, yes, you fill me, you can fill in with anything. We met yesterday morning, and the, we're now in the midst, or they, the Turnbridge Company is in the middle of what they call value engineering, which is an interesting word, meaning trying to shave costs and still perform the function for which we need. And so far, so good. And then we're expecting rebates that we haven't completely received yet, the amounts of them, which is going to be a savings too. So it's a little tricky getting down to 3.3 million, but I'm sure that we will. And we're looking at, everything is on the table, other than that we want a garage, we need one, and we're going to renovate the old one for storage.
Perfect. Anything else? All set, Paul? Okay, comments from the press are public. Anyone can come up and comment about anything, you just have to hold it to three minutes. Okay, saying none. Recognition resignations and retirements, none. And we're going to have appointments. Anita, come on down. Annual review with the Heritage Commission. You've been allotted 20 minutes, Anita. Okay, I've got a clock right here.
Everybody gets that, Anita.
Everybody, that's right. But Anita has a terrific, we just, we get drawn into your discussion.
I know, we always have fun.
So we all have to be a little self-disciplined.
We do have fun, yes.
Submitted by Heritage Commission Chair Anita Krieger. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Heritage Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the Commissioner's commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about. So you've got the floor, Anita.
Basically, I have the annual report in front of me. Most of you have seen it before. At the end of 2017, we had four full members and a liaison. Since then, we have lost a member and gained a member. We are actively seeking one more member and three alternates. We have met seven times during 2017, and we meet on the second Monday of alternating months. The tour brochures are still available at town hall, at the library, and everywhere else where I'm walking and giving them to people. We do a lot of it. The display case out here currently has the recognition of our town hall's history. That's what's in there right now. We hope to have a new one up by May. Not, the subject is unknown at this point. The commemorative plaques have been made for 16 more homes, actually, there are 17 more homes. And if I talk fast enough, we've got some people here waiting to receive some of theirs.
Nice.
The signs, two commemorative signs for the town were originally made, were originally ready to be put up. They were granite signs, and we ran into problems with the Department of Transportation. We weren't allowed to put them where we wanted them because they had granite bases on them, and they couldn't be within 35 feet of the road. So our town, bless your hearts, thank you, Paul, have bought the signs off of us, and they are now erected, one of them in front of town hall and one of them down at Watson Park. And we are getting new signs made for the other locations, which are already made, and I have pictures of them. But they can't be installed until the ground thaws. But they are similar to the one in front of the police department, similar to the one from Abbey Griffin Park. They are blue, and they will be more this direction than this direction. You will like them. Everybody will like them. The plaque for the history of the town, the village dam is all, and the Chamberlain Bridge thing is all waiting till other people can do things that we can't do. The commissioned man booths on the 4th of July, the Knights of Columbus, the greeting cards are still for sale. Chip Powert is our new member, and Sean Sylvester has retired from the commission. So now we have myself, Lon Woods, Ralph Gurens, and Chip as active members. And Finley, who's not over there, is our liaison. And he attends most of our meetings, but the last one was conflicting with all the budget stuff. Now, we do have some more plans.
I'm sure he would have rather have been with you.
He would have had more fun, I'm sure of that, we always do. We do have some upcoming plans that we want to run by you and alert you to. Remember the slate roofs from this building? The original building, the slate roof singles?
Okay.
We have them, they were given to the Historical Society to figure out what to do with them because they didn't have room to store them here. So we are getting, you know the signs that go on the town, road signs that have the town seal on them?
Yeah.
We're having those seals, having some more of them made, a little larger. They're going to be decoupaged onto the slates, and we will have them available for sale.
Nice.
So you will see that soon. Sklar Park, Sklar Family Park at Thornton's Ferry, that's a new piece of property. And as that is developed, we will be taking part in that, in the plans for it, because the plan, our plan, which I don't know if it will come to fruition, but I sure hope so, is to make that a Thornton's Ferry park. We are working with the town of Litchfield that is doing the same thing. Our dream is to have a grand opening of those two parks at the same time and have boats going back and forth across where the ferry did. But we're looking forward to that.
Very cool.
So the Heritage Commission in Litchfield is doing the same thing that we are doing. The two historical societies are all working on it.
Isn't that great?
So, yes. It'll be a challenge because getting to our side is not an easy thing to get to on the roads. You have to go under a bridge, and then you have to go through mud and all the rest of that stuff. Where Litchfield, it's about 30 feet from the road. But where are they going to park is their big problem, and they have a big drop-off where we have it gradual.
Right.
But we're working on it.
Okay.
The Uppam Road Hazen property, which had Fuller's Mill on it. We are conversing back and forth with all of these to find out if they are going to protect the mill. We were told that they were not going to take it out and that they were not going to be building anything because it's part of the floodplain anyway. But we want to preserve that mill if we can, the mill site. So we're working on it. The Old Kings Highway, we are going to be working a lot on that, tracing the original locations of it, putting up more signage for it, because I know that 12 years ago, the Heritage Commission was making signs to put along the road. We don't know whatever happened to them because I wasn't on the commission then. I saw pictures of them, but they're not up. We're going to work on that.
So you don't know if they were actually installed?
Not that I can find. I've walked a lot of it. We're taking a field trip out there in two weeks, oh, three weeks, after the tax season. I work at Block. We can't do anything till after the tax season. We also are concerned about Simon's Rock, which is on the New Hampshire list of historical places. It's located off of Manchester Street. It's a famous place, it's well-recognized, but it's on Penachuck Waterworks property. And my understanding is that there's something going on down there. And I looked at the maps, and the maps for that, I saw them, well, I probably shouldn't have, but I saw them. And there's no sign of Simon's Rock being shown on those maps. We want to make sure it's not going to disappear, and access will still be available to it. We have sent a letter to, what's it called? The Good Karma Family Trust, asking for consideration to set up a fund for preservation of properties in Merrimack. Don't know if it'll get us anywhere.
Literally, properties to purchase?
There are properties that might become available for sale if we had the money to do it. There might be properties that could be donated, that we would need some money to refurbish them to do anything.
Got you.
We would like to ask them to set up a fund that this could be happening. Almost every other historical society and Heritage Commission around has such a thing, we do not. What have we got to lose? She's got $500 million.
Good Karma, maybe it'll work.
Maybe she'll love us. Jane Doe, spelled D-O-U-G-H.
Clever.
So we're hoping that she will love the town of Merrimack, as I hear she does, whoever she is. But what have we got to lose for asking, so we did send the letter.
Absolutely.
We are also planning on putting more signage in along the Old Kings Highway. Signage at Greater Woods, the three Class 6 roads in town, which is Old Blood Road, the old Greater Road, and the Old Kings Highway. We're looking for more signage for them, we're looking for signages for the four villages. So we have these brochures. Does anybody know where Reed's Ferry is, where we want signage for them? So we're looking at that, we're looking at signages for the original locations of all the schoolhouses. We had 12 schoolhouses in town, we know where they were all located. Three of them still exist. One of them is not in the same location, but it's still there.
Yeah.
And some of them have been turned into homes, and some of them have been moved out of town. But we would like to identify the sites where they were located.
Okay.
So those are some of the plans we have for the coming year. Now, signs. The signs are here.
Just to let the Girl Scouts know, you can go get the signs.
Pardon?
I just want to explain to the Girl Scouts what this is about.
Okay.
There are homes within Merrimack that were built, what dates do you have in there? If they're considered historic homes, the Heritage Commission has these plaques that you're going to see. And people are able to display them on their house, and that means the house is built in 1863.
That's right.
So if you see, if you go around Merrimack and you see a house with that sign, you'll know it's one of the, not original, but close to original.
Old houses.
Old houses.
Actually, this is one of the barns, it isn't a house.
Ah.
You know where the, the eyeglass place, the?
The Pearl?
Yeah.
The big barn? That is this, that's where this is going.
Oh, that was a, that was a barn, that's right.
That's what it is, it was right next door, the house is gone now. But the barn is still there, and it is historic barn, and it's going up. So that one is at 401 Daniel Works.
So there are some people here that she's going to give these to.
Some of the people who are going to have these are going to come get them. Those that are not here tonight, partially because this meeting has been postponed twice, and we lost track of who was coming when. We will go around and we will install the signs when the ground is suitable for us to get them without killing ourselves.
Yeah, why don't you take the microphone from one of them? Pete, okay, perfect.
Can I do it from here?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the Jones Barn, which is at 3 Jennifer Street, down in Reed's Ferry. That is also currently in use for other things. This is Reverend Jacob Bernapp's house, our first minister, 45, yeah. Why can't I think, Turkey Hill Road? They just renovated it, there are new people living in it.
Oh, it's very nice.
They're eager to have their sign, but I just found out their name two days ago. So they didn't get notified of this, but the name is, the sign is ready. This one is at 9 Harris Street, up in Reed's Ferry. This was a house that was a mail-order house. Plans for them came out of the Sears catalog. This one is at 10 Griffin Street, and it was the Daniel Jones house. Griffin Street is down near Thornton's Ferry. Anybody comes across these, come on up. This one is at 11 Hadley Street, again, up in Reed's Ferry. This one is at 8 Griffin Street, and it was the original Welch's store that was moved when they redid all of the roads. Its original location is where Brown and Brown Insurance is now. But the house was moved down the street, and it's still there. This one is at 7 Fuller Mill Road, you go to the end of Fuller Mill Road, it looks like an old house. Very old house. But it is still there, and we want to sign on it. The next one is also on Fuller Mill Road, the Center Home. This is at 20 Fuller Mill Road. They just recently took the barn down that used to go with that house. This is at 68 Joppa Road. This is the H. Blood home, Blood Road was named after this blood. But this is on Joppa Road, there's a big fence in front of it. I'm hoping that we can get the sign where you'll be able to see it from the road because the fence is about that high.
You got five, three minutes left there, Anita.
I'm talking, I'm talking. This is 150 Joppa Road. This, another one has a fence in front of it.
She's telling me.
We're getting there. I know yours are at the end, folks.
She planned that, you know that, folks.
This one is on Harris Street, Ellen Wheeler home, the Wheeler chapter was named after John Wheeler. This one is 23 Loop Road. We got a bunch of them.
There we are.
Come on up. Built in 1890. The HW McQuestion home. Yes, McQuestion is not spelled the way you think McQuestion is. There is your sign, and if you want help getting it put up, let us know.
This is our third one that you presented to us.
I know, I know you have.
What happened to the other two?
We have three houses on the road.
Oh, I see. I was going to say, I was thinking you had the signs stolen, okay.
The first two were built in 1820.
Wow.
Thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it.
It's great.
You've been waiting a long time for this, I know. This one is at 9 Loop Road, right down the street. Loop Road is one of the, one of the few roads that still has a lot of old houses on it they haven't replaced. 25 Loop Road. This was the, it belongs to a real estate company. It's, the people are living in it or renting it. And here is 27 Loop Road. Elliot Orthodontics is in there now? Yep, and that was there, and I talked to them today, and they couldn't get here tonight. 11 Loop Road. Loop Road is a big place, and didn't have many signs on it. The Henderson Jones house. And this one is at 5 Loop Road, which is also, it's owned by private people right now, but it's not occupied by the people who own it. And this was a John Chamberlain home. John Chamberlain is the Chamberlain Bridge, and he was one of the first property owners in Merrimack. Did I miss somebody? Nope. Okay, everybody who isn't here tonight, we will get ahold of them, and we will put these signs up ourselves as soon as we can get to the ground to do it. And we hope, within the next three years, to have another 16 to 20 of these things to put up. There are a lot of them around town, take a look at them.
A lot of old houses.
Okay, did I make it?
You are right, Anita. Thank you very much, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Anita.
Okay, I'm going to rearrange the schedule a little bit. I know the Girl Scouts wouldn't mind staying till late, but they have school tomorrow. So I'm going to take the privilege, yes, there's no snow coming, so they have school tomorrow. I think if they did have snow, there would be school tomorrow. Okay, so this is consideration for Girl Scout project at Wasserman Park. Submitted by Parks and Recreation Director, Matt Casperius. Matt, come on, come on down. Girl Scout 14002 would like to build an equipment storage shed for the dog park at Wasserman Park so that the dog park committee can store rakes, shovels, and other items that are routinely used to maintain the dog park. And these are the ladies that are involved, I'm assuming?
Yes, and they have a presentation for you, which I'll let them give.
Perfect.
So I'm here mostly for moral support, but yeah. The, the dog park, you know, we have a large group of kind of dedicated volunteers that do a lot of maintenance, you know, kind of routine maintenance over there, since we don't have full-time maintenance staff of our own. So, you know, rakes and shovels and that kind of stuff, which ends up as kind of a collection along the fence. And so it was something that they had asked me about a while ago, was, you know, a place to store things. And I don't have anything close enough nearby that I can give them exclusive access to. So when the girls came along with this project, we thought, perfect. So.
So they've already presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And we've gotten the memo from you, Matt, related to the three options.
Yep.
And that you had a preference that you communicated to them.
Yep.
But we do have a handout that we had in our packets, but we've also received one, an additional one tonight, which I've distributed. And ladies, it's all you, so you can start your presentation.
Hello, my name is Malin Lambert. This is Olivia Springer, and this is Avon Lynn Curly. And we are representing Troop 14002. And we are working on our bronze award, and we found a problem in our town, and we wanted to build a dog park shed. And the shed is going to be located near the parking lot at Wasserman Park. And there are also some pictures on exactly where it's going to be located. And the shed that we were looking at for pre-bill, it would be around $600, and it is 6 feet by 8 feet. And then we were thinking about building a shed ourselves, which would cost around $975, and it would have a ramp.
Okay, so you've got two choices here, right? You're talking the 6 by 8 pre-made one, right? And then you've got another option, which is the one that you would build?
Yes.
What's your preference, or do you have one?
Well, when we talked to the Parks and Rec, they said that we should probably do the, build it ourselves because then we, then maybe we could get, like, because we're going to apply for a grant, so maybe we could get more money, because if we're going to build it ourselves.
So you're going to raise money? I saw in the handout that you had all different jobs for the people in your troop, right? And one of them is fundraiser. That's a big job. Who's going to be the fundraiser? Ah. And you're going to raise money how?
We're going to do probably like a dog biscuit sale, and we're going to make the dog biscuits ourselves.
And you have a recipe for the dog biscuits?
Yes, we actually have like 20 recipes out of Oregon.
And where would you sell the dog biscuits? Well, one was a dog park. I know when they, in the paperwork you sent us, which was, which of course is a wonderful, because you know people will buy them. But you might want to go to some of the stores like the pet store?
Yeah, we're thinking about. Yeah, we're thinking about going to like Super Dogs and like some of the pet-friendly places.
Perfect. So the fundraiser over there. Hi. She's gonna need everyone's help, right? Not only making the cookies, but finding a place to sell them?
Yeah.
Excellent. Very nice. Oh, you have additional. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I do public relations. For our timeline, we're thinking about doing the shed installation the weekend of May fourth. The fundraising will be in March and April, and then spreading the word May and June.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Curly, and I am doing the, I am the money manager.
Oh, you're important.
Yeah.
You work with the fundraiser, right? Yeah, yeah.
For our funding, we applied for a grant, and we are going to sell homemade dog biscuits. For a troop donation, we donate, we will be donating about a hundred dollars and our mater- material discounts and free help from our builder.
Nice. Very nice. Okay, why don't we, anything else? As well, okay. Counselors, do you have any questions of the ladies?
No, I, I'd like the second option. I think it's, um, it'd be a great option for you guys, and work building as a team and whatnot, so I agree. I agree.
And thank you.
Yeah, I think, one, the idea is terrific. It really is.
Oh, sure.
It really is a terrific. And I, I personally agree with Tom, because I think it shouldn't just all be the fundraiser, it's work.
Somebody else has to do something.
Somebody else is, well, making the cookies, and I'm sure all of you are gonna be making cookies too. But I think there would be a lot of value in, in working together and accomplishing that. There's something different about building something versus buying something somebody else built, you know? When you have kids, you can say, I helped build that. As long as it's still standing. Which I'm sure it will be. Did you, Pete?
I just wanna say thanks. Uh, thanks to all of you girls. It's a great project. The, uh, they need that tool shed, and I think that's a, a great help. So thank you very much.
So are you going to, when are you going to decide which one you're gonna do? 'Cause you've got two choices here. You've got the pre-made one, or maybe you don't know yet, huh? You think that's...
Depends on the fundraising, doesn't it?
Oh, maybe that's what it is. Okay. All you need from us is permission to do it though, right? Okay. So I would like to accept a motion to approve this project.
So moved?
And, motion made by, we're giggling 'cause he made that easy. So moved is you don't wanna repeat.
That's the easy way on. I do it all the time.
Motion made by Tom Thornton, seconded by Tom Koenig. Any other questions or comments, Pete? All set. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Four zero zero. And I do think it's a wonderful choice, and I wish you all the luck. And then maybe paperwork we have to sign. Is there paperwork we have to sign? Sometimes we have to, I'm just curious.
Not at this stage yet, but we will definitely get in touch.
Down the road?
Yes, if Anita rises.
Excellent. I wish there was some way of being able to advertise for you. You know what? When you decide where you're gonna sell the dog biscuits, let Eileen know, and we'll actually advertise here for you during the town council meetings. Okay, so we'll say, hey, they're selling dog cookies at such and such Shaws. We need, we want that. Matt does? Okay. So just, okay, so just call the town manager, let her know when you're ready to sell. We'll try to help you advertise. Okay, fundraiser? We'll help you. We'll help you fundraise. Matthew, do you wanna say something additionally?
I was just gonna say, with all of the scout projects that we get, when they tell us when they're doing it, we use our social media outlets to promote that as well, so...
There you go. So you're gonna, you better make a lot of cookies, is all I gotta say. Okay, good luck, ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now wait a minute. I mean, I know you wanted to go home, so you can go to school. Go home and do your homework, so I'll give you a minute so you can move.
Thank you.
Oh, five zero zero, sorry. Not a good... At least, at least you don't crack me in the middle, all right? That's usually the way it is. Don't roll your eyes. Okay, there is no public hearing. Legislative updates and state reps. I don't see anyone. Town managers' report. Eileen?
I have nothing.
Oh. I'm not prepared for that. Okay. There is no consent agenda. There is no old business. Okay, new business, committee appointments. The town council to consider appointing the following individuals to town committees pursuant to Charter Article four dash eight. Now, our original agenda item had two applicants, Neil Anketell, did I pronounce that correct? Close enough? And Dan Ricker. There was a full position and there was a alternate position. Since that time, we have received notification that Paul McGlaughlin is resigning from the planning board. So we now have two full-time positions. Now Neil had originally asked for the full-time, uh, member position, and when we interviewed, had talked about, if you do alternate, would you be willing to do that? The answer is yes. Now there is a full-time, full-member position. We contacted him, and yes, he is still interested. So we are looking at assigning, uh, two full-member positions here for the planning board. Okay? And you do have the paperwork in your packets?
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Neil Anketell and Dan Ri- Ricker to, uh, full-time planning board membership.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Tom Thornton. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Oh, Pete, yeah.
I just wanna comment and, uh, thank Neil for stepping forward, as well as, uh, Mr. Ricker as well, Dan, um, and, uh, taking this very important position.
Yeah, as you pointed out, we did interview them, and, and, uh, they both have very good qualifications, very interested in helping out and understanding more about what's going on in town, and, and we're excited to have them join us full-time on the planning board. Dan's been serving as a, as an alternate member, but sitting in almost is full-time most of the time, so, because there's typically one or two openings, uh, in a night. So it, it's, it's just a, a great opportunity to move forward, and I'm glad we have a full board this way, and we have another alternate position open, so if somebody's interested, by all means, let us know. 'Cause the alternates spend as much time as the full-time members, most of the time.
Deliberation.
And they're able to sit at the board and discuss the entire plan, even if they're not a voting member that night. So it's not a bad position to be in, and it's a little bit less pressure. But anyway, so we're, we're excited to move forward with these.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Five zero zero. And Neil, you're here, so you're gonna be taking the oath. So why don't you come up to the microphone?
She's gonna swear at you. Swear you in. One of the two.
I want you to raise your right hand and just read this out, 'cause that is your oath.
Okay. I, Neil Anketell, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the Merrimack Planning Board according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of its constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help me God.
We need to do some signatures. Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Thanks, the honor.
Send this around. Send this around for signatures. The paperwork must be done. There you go, Jackie. That too. Okay. We've done that. Okay, next, Chapter One Eleven Conservation Areas, Merrimack Town Code Process and Procedure. Submitted by the, um, Conservation Commission Member, Tim Tenhae. Town council to review and approve a process by which Chapter One Eleven Conservation Areas of the Merrimack Town Code may be revised. First of all, I wanna thank you, Tim, for not pushing, as you know, we just did the whole town code over. And I know that there was some discussion about, gee, should we pass that when it's probably gonna be revised? And we knew that you wanted to, which is one of the things you communicated. You wanted to be able to develop a process, and we decided, okay, let's just pass the town code of the conservation, Chapter One Eleven. I think there were some minor revisions. And then we would work on an overhauling of it, which is what this is initiating, right?
Exactly.
So, please proceed.
So this is definitely an overhaul. So, uh, I provided you all a, a document, a seven-page document that kinda outlines the process. I also, earlier this week, you know, put a little quick piece together. I don't know if that made it to all of you or not? Okay.
No.
Okay, that's fine.
We have a comedian in the chair, in the council now.
Need a little levity there.
We do.
You're right. Yes, I would know nothing about that.
I remember you having it.
Yeah, we did sit next to each other, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
All right, so I, um, I, along with the, with the rest of the commission, uh, through a process we did late last fall into early winter, outlined a process that we thought might be applicable in order to, uh, revamp, revise, or overhaul Chapter One Eleven. What I, what I wanted, what the intent to do with this was to be very deliberate about the steps and be detailed about the steps, so that way, uh, people could follow along and know exactly where we were in the process, and, and potentially anticipate, ah, the commission's gonna be coming up on this part of the process. We know we need to be ready to manage this or handle that, uh, in order to keep things moving. Uh, I don't expect this process to happen overnight. Uh, you'll see references to weeks inside the document, and I suspect when we're all done and you add all those weeks together, as well as the volunteer time of members of the commission, and all the other things that will pop up and happen during the way, that this will be a good year-long process. I don't see any other way around it, so... But putting some expectations around weeks just kinda frames it a little bit. And, and by adding, you know, when you look at the numbers, I'm figuring that smaller number of weeks means the effort's not as great as the larger number of weeks. Okay? So, uh, I have provided some drafts of this along the way to the town manager. I also included Tim Thompson. Uh, Tim did provide some clarity on, on the weeks. He, especially where it involved his department. Uh, so I, I, uh, I took his input and added to it, so, um... So, I'm not sure you want me to step through the process? Do you want me to answer questions? How do you wanna approach this?
I just would like to, I think it would be a good idea if you just, uh, talked about what, um, you would like to accomplish, because it's a wonderful thing and an enormous undertaking, that I think we've wanted to have done for many, many years.
Right. All right, so I, I can walk through it in, in a, in a quick manner then.
Perfect.
Uh, basically, if you go to the assessing department online, and you, uh, and, and you look at all the properties that are available, you can do an extraction, and you'll find that the town of Merrimack, either by the town itself or through the Conservation Commission, owns a hundred and ninety-plus parcels inside the town of Merrimack at this time. If you then start weeding them out, you'll find, uh, I believe somewhere between thirty and forty of those parcels are open space parcels that would or could potentially require some sort of control or regulation, something that would wanna put in an ordinance, so therefore, our police department would have some authority to, to, uh, to write, help us regulate the activities that happen. So, uh, you might say, well, how do you get from a hundred and ninety-two down to thirty or forty? Well, what I tried to outline in this process is, first, we wanna identify all the properties and do an extraction out of the assessor's assessing database of the data that they have, not asking them to create new data. But if you poke around, you'll see that they have sales information. When was the last time the property was sold? They have book and page numbers for where, uh, deeds were registered in the registry. Uh, they also have addresses and names and things like that, so what we're looking for first is, we can pull some of that data, but it's not all publicly available through the website, so we would ask that the assessing department do a little more detailed of what comes out of their, of what they have in their database. We're certainly not looking for current property owners. We know what they are anyways, but, 'cause they're the town of Merrimack. But we're not looking for a thing that would be considered private or confidential, but, uh, things like book and page and all that, it's all publicly available data through the registry of deeds anyways, so... So the thought is, is to first identify the properties, and then start to whittle them down and decide which ones could potentially require or potentially already have in their deeds, regulations that, that we should, uh, codify in, in the code. So, uh, so what we'd suggest is we do was with the original list, is the Conservation Commission would take a first pass at it and, and whittle it down, and then ask for input from the town council. While we're doing that, we also want to start extracting data on them and getting electronic records of the deeds. So that means going to the registry online and pulling the deeds, or we may have copies in our own town files, whether they're downstairs in community, well, across and downstairs in community development, or down in the building department, but likely in community development. So, uh, some of our properties have restrictions through easements as opposed to deeds, so would be wanting to pull those kinds of information. And some of our properties, uh, actually already exist in Chapter One Eleven, or may be covered by Chapter One Forty-two, which would therefore be ruled out in why we get from a hundred and ninety-two down to thirty or forty, I suspect, when we're done. So, uh, so there's a data collection phase as well as a narrowing down, and what we thought we would do is, we would identify and narrow down, and then start getting input. 'Cause this whole process should be a back and forth where we get input, and, uh, and make sure that we're going in the right direction. I, I think the general feel from the commission is less is more. We're not looking to add regulations that are unnecessary or create new things, but we wanna codify what's already known. A lot of the deeds that we've acquired, like the Wasserman Conservation Area, has restrictions about, uh, the types of vehicles that can be done, whether you can hunt or not, and things like that. If that stuff is in the deed, that's legally binding forever, because that's the way things were passed. We just wanna bring that forward. I think it would help answer questions. It would avoid the police department from wondering, you know, can they do this here or not? If someone says, hey, I'm hearing gunshots out in Wasserman, can they really do that, you know?
So you would categorize with like restrictions? There would be groupings?
Yeah, so the first pass would be to, would be what I call classify or categorize based on what we already know in the current legal documents or the plans that have already been set forth, like Horse Hill has a master plan, a definitive plan, which sets, you know, states certain rules. Greater Woods does to some extent, and the others, so... So we would do all what's already been designated in some form, and then we would also review some of the properties to see, do they lend themselves, because of their characteristics, to needing some sort of extra regulation? Whether that's a limitation for the hours of the day that you can be on that property, uh, whether they're, they're, they're very close to a residential area, so it's probably not appropriate to do one thing or another, and, um, at this point, I don't wanna even guess what we would do on the properties, so... So, uh, so, so I consider some of those, um, regulations to be required, and some of those are desired. And we would eventually pull all those together and try to create as few categories as possible. Uh, I suspect we'll have three or four categories by the time we're done. And one large category will be, we're not doing anything, okay? But it will be a, it'll be a decision that we as a group make, as opposed to the way it's being handled now. just because no one's done anything, so.
One quick question. Chapter one eleven presently is labeled conservation areas.
Yes.
So you, would you suspect that that would be re-categorized? Because not all the land is conservation, right?
Correct, yeah. In fact, some of the properties that we call conservation areas don't technically have a conservation easement or anything on them, so.
Right.
So I, I would more refer to these as open spaces. So these are going to be properties without municipal buildings. They'll be properties, as I kind of talked about it during the identification phase, that don't have a designated use or a future use, such as the future library parcel will probably not be here, unless someone felt it was necessary at this time to do something. Some of our properties could be storage areas where material is stored and things like that. So technically, there's no building, but this probably mounts of dirt or gravel, because that's where Public Works is utilizing, so. So that, again, brings that big number down to a much smaller number, so.
That would be categorized, Pete?
Tim, thank you, and thank you for this, the great presentation, this plan here. I heard a couple of things that I really liked, is one, in my experience too, is, yeah, let's, let's have good clarification on what the police can and cannot do there, and even the fire marshals and so forth. And I also liked hearing the fact that you were saying, hey, let's not create more rules than we have to as well. My only question out of this is that, it says here, the town budget will cover all expenses, and I get a little nervous when I hear legal review and consul, consultants. So, do you have any rough idea of what that might be?
Sorry, so expenses are going to be, if, if there's a cost associated with pulling documents from the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, legal parts, then there'll be printing, because as we do the various public hearings and get the input from the public as well as, as everything else, there'll be some documentation activities there. I think some of that, or most of that, could be covered with the current conservation budget, that, in the town budget anyway, so. But the legal review, I mean, we're doing a legally binding ordinance, so I, I don't know what that cost is going to be.
And it depends upon what decisions are made as to the ordinances.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends on where we want to go with this. Hence, the earlier comment like that you, that you noticed is, less is more, okay? We want to do what's necessary, either because it's in a deed or a document that requires it, or because there's some other compelling reason to do it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we both interrupted you. You can go ahead if this, I started it, I'm sorry Pete.
So, so in, in the document, I do, there's, there's a number of places where we're seeking input, where we're exchanging, we're providing data to, to the town staff. I suspect right away, when we put that first list together of, of potential properties, that, that the town manager would be requesting her department heads to look at, at those parcels, because it's probably things that we on the commission aren't aware of, so that will help narrow the list down. I, I, in the data gathering phase of deeds and things like that, we are going to need some of the community development time to help us pulling deeds, but also pulling subdivision plans, if that's part of it, or other things. Because some of our properties have come to us because they're the back lots of a large subdivision that was done in the nineteen seventies or the nineteen eighties, or potentially the nineties, so. So, usually what things on the deed will say, refer to subdivision plan, da-da-da-da, and that's the one that has the restrictions or whatever on it, so. So those kinds of things need to be pulled up. Hopefully, they exist in the files, it's just a matter of pulling together, so. What else? Yeah, because then, when it comes to actually, you know, we get to part, phase three, which is actually the proposed regulation. So we'll be putting something together the best we can, none of us are lawyers, okay? So, so we'll be looking for input. I, I kind of figured we would use the, the current town code as an example. But eventually, that will have to have some review and some tweaking, okay?
And there has to be consistency terminology, right?
Right, so. And, and, you know, not to, not to avoid the issue, but we are going to get, we are going to get involved with, with firearms and discharging of firearms, the use of bows and arrows and things like that. Those already exist in chapter one eleven, but we are going to have to address that on certain properties, because they, they probably have some of those restrictions in their deeds, so.
It's nice to know, as you said, that would be, add clarity.
Yeah.
Because right now, there's not, on some parcels, clarity.
On some parcels, right. And, and what's unfortunate is you could have two parcels side by side with different sets. So some of the activity we might want to do is, is potentially, because the two parcels are so uniquely joined, an example is the Wasserman Conservation Area. It's next to Wasserman Park. The two of them have a different deed with different restrictions, but the Conservation Commission also owns another twenty acres right next to Wasserman Conservation Area, making that about a hundred and plus acre parcel. It almost makes sense to have the conservation area and the property we own, the twenty acres, have very similar, if not the same, rules, because it avoids problems. You know, you say, well, like, when I'm on, when I have my foot on this side of the stone wall, I'm okay, and when I have my foot on that side, it's not. Well, maybe we want to consider that. We might not want to, but, but I think those.
Should be discussed.
Yeah, and it'll certainly make the police department's job a lot easier. Never mind the public's job of trying to figure out what's the right thing to do. So, because most people want to do the right thing, they just need to know how to find that, so.
Know what it is and post the accuracy of it.
Yeah, so. At the, you know, the very last phase really gets into your normal process. It's, you know, you have a charter, designate a process for an update or a change in, in an ordinance, and we would just follow the normal process. You'd have your three readings, right? And, and, and that would be that, so.
But there would be intermittent times where it would be presented to the council?
Yeah.
I think, I think your proposal was strategic times, it's sort of, before you go on to the next.
Exactly, right. So, so the thought is, is that after we've identified the properties, I didn't want to have a, a stopping point where we waited for the council to, to provide input, but we would have that narrowed list. And we would provide it to you, and if you chose to want to have a meeting with us, to come in for us to review that, we'd be happy to do that. If you just want to have a chance to look at it and provide independent input to the town manager, you can do that, so. So it'd be going to you and the town manager, but likely would be coming to you after the, the town manager and departments have had a chance to review it first, because they know lots of things that we probably don't, so.
We'd refer to them anyway.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's one point. But also, near, at the, at the end of phase three, or as, actually at the end of classifications, we also want to have a formal stopping point where we get your buy-in in concurrence, that we're going down the right path. Because if we're not, there's no sense in spending the time creating a legal document if you don't agree with the characterizations or the rules and, and regulations. Because we'll have the nature of the ordinance done at that point, or what, what's being proposed at that point. It'll be, what are the properties, you know, what are the rules we want to codify? And, and around the, around the categories that we have, so.
So what, yeah, what are the regulations as they exist now? And what needs to be done to change them if we choose to?
Yeah, right. Yeah, so you'll get to see all of that. We'll have all the background data, because you might say, well, why are you saying you can't discharge a firearm on here? And it's going to say, well, it was in the deed when the town acquired the property.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that's a simple answer, okay? But there may be something like, well, why do you want to restrict the hours? Okay, which we don't do on all our properties. And, and there may be a, a reason because some of the neighbors came to our public hearing and said, can you really avoid having, you know, lights and things going on in our backyards, you know, after dark? So, so.
Eileen, I'd like feedback from you. First of all, Pete, did you have a question?
I just was gonna, I, I just kind of like to get the opinion of the town manager as well on this.
Perfect, that's exactly where I'm going.
I think this is a wonderful project, and I think it might be a good idea that when you, we, we certainly, the staff and myself are more than willing to help. I think it might be a good idea to get the department heads that would relate specifically to these types of parcels. I think you might also be surprised to see that the assessing department, if they dig deep enough, there might be even wills and things like that, that they might have on things. I've been surprised when I've been looking for things. So, you know, making sure that everybody knows what they're talking about, once the list is compiled. And then, actually, to be fair, all of our chapters have been reviewed by legal counsel. So, you know, Becky reviews them for continuity and some other people review them for continuity and cohesiveness with the rest of the code. And then, legal counsel reviews them to make sure that the language is proper and that, obviously, there are restrictions on what you could do with guns and what, how you can restrict guns and, you know, and weapons of any kind. So, we're absolutely happy to meet with you, and you're welcome to come to my office and sit down and, and talk about how we might begin.
Okay, other, I guess I need from you, your opinions to the status of the request for the, for the process now. The only thing that I had concern about is there were some timelines put in, like, two weeks after this, the assessment department, I'd like to get some feedback from the departments before we initiate that, I guess is my.
Right, and that's actually what I was saying, is maybe I could meet with Tim, we can get a list.
Regarding those, okay.
Yeah, we could get a list of the properties. We can sit down with the department heads and, you know, maybe get them all mapped out, so everybody knows where they are. And find out who has what documents. So I, I think we're, as Tim had said, we're a little premature with giving timeframes and that kind of thing. We won't really know that until, you know, some of the work's begun.
I guess I'm not sure where that leaves us though. Do we have enough information?
No.
To be able to make a determination on whether this proposal?
What I would recommend is that you approve the concept, but.
As written, or just the concept?
No, just approve the concept until we can, because it, it, there's too many specifics in it, without having the knowledge, yeah.
Is that what you were going to ask, Peter?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you were going to ask?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I guess I, I don't disagree with that. I think, I think the process is ninety percent there. I don't see anything that puts alarms for me, that I would dislike it.
Yep.
I think the categorization, being able to categorize groupings, so that they're consistent, some real deliberations as to maybe, there needs to be some ordinances changed and stuff. I think that, the only thing that made me uneasy is the timeframe. And not having feedback from the departments prior to accepting the actual proposal. The process I feel very comfortable with. Tom, did you?
I guess, I, I have a little problem with that, because there's nothing in here that penalizes anybody if they don't meet that timeframe. It's a suggestion or a guidance, which if you don't have any kind of a goal, you're never going to get there, because you don't know where you're going. So this gives us a goal to work towards, but again, there's no penalty in it. And I guess the only other thing to ask is, if we're trying to formalize this, do we need to formalize a way to modify it while we're at it? Or, you know, it, it's put together in one fashion. Obviously, we can modify it, we're the town council and it's part of the town's program. But, you know, I just wonder if we should make a comment in there that this could be modified with a public hearing or something, another, or whatever, discussion with MCC or something, just so that we don't get ourselves hung up on, you know, somebody, the, the town manager review being completed in three weeks. I mean, that's a goal, it's, it's definitely a, an admirable thing to go for. And, and I would want to leave something like that in, so that we have a plan to work towards, as opposed to just leaving it open-ended and coming back in six months and saying, oh, we never got to that, which is, we're famous for doing.
Having a time, you know, time.
I mean.
I'm not against having a timeframe, because I think you're right, there's accountability there.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Exactly, so.
I guess my concern is, I was asking, the town manager has terms of feedback from the departments that are designated, and I'd like to have their opinion as to, yes, that's a reasonable request of our department? Or no, I guess that's where I was, more than the time, although time was one of them, yes.
I just, I, I think that the, the best way to go would be to have, once we've had a chance to meet with the department heads, within the next couple of weeks, then, you know, Tim and I could come back and talk about the progress that we've made, see if we need to make any modifications to this document, which there may or may not be. And then you can formally, it may not have time certain, but it'll, there'll be definitely.
But we're not going to leave it open-ended. I could say, this will be accomplished by April something.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree that we are guilty, we'll do it, and then it sort of floats, and there's no commitment. So I think this, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where, why I put times in there. We'd like some level of commitment, because we as volunteers are committing to do an extensive effort here. So, so we'd like to have that. But we understand things happen, you know, culvers fall apart.
Oh, yeah.
Things, whatever, so, you know, Mother's Day floods have happened, so, you know, things happen, people get sick, you know, all, all kinds of things. But I figured until we actually wrote something down, we had nothing to talk to. Now we have a document, a process.
We have a framework.
We can twiddle it, we can adjust it. I'm happy to sit down and go, and talk with you. Actually, looking at a list of properties, right now, the only list is all the properties. I, I wasn't thinking that we would do a whittle-down with all the departments right away. But I, what I, I would, personally, what I'd like to do is sit with you and your department heads and say, do you think the timeframe is reasonable, okay? And that's really what we're looking for, is reasonableness, so. It also sets a little bit of an expectation, because if we know that when you've done one piece, say, community development's done one piece, then we can start the next. We can start planning, okay, we know in six weeks, that's about the time we can start planning to do the next piece, and, and I can go off and go on vacation with my family and come back.
That's exactly what I wanted, because we, you don't have that feedback right now.
Yeah.
And there may be, you, you may find, I doubt it, but you may find that the tax assesses, we can't do this piece, but so-and-so can do that piece. So that again, adds a more precise, preciseness, so.
Or, you know, as you infer, that there may be several departments that know things about it, just because they've been here for a long, like, for instance, I heard, but I don't know if it's true, because I haven't seen the document, that there are restrictions on Bishop Field, on what can be built there, or actually, I don't think anything's supposed to be built there. So, you know, there are deeds and there are wills and those kinds of things that everyone needs to put their own little piece of the pie that they know into it.
Any other questions from any of the councilor? Okay, so I don't think we need a motion, but could we have a consensus that regarding the process? Does everyone agree that they, they like the process that's being proposed?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion? Or do we want to leave it at that?
Are, are you looking for something more formalized?
Only if everyone was comfortable to go forward, okay? This is going to involve a lot of people. If there's any questions or concerns, let's iron those out first, before we get, start down the road, so.
So why don't we set a timeline for, so you, Eileen, and Tim?
Yeah.
We'll have a discussion about having a meeting with department heads or whatever you want to do. And let's set a target date, let's commit ourselves.
So.
How does August sound? I couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
So, so I'm available two weeks from tomorrow.
Well, it's not going to be that fast.
To, well, just to sit with Eileen and her department heads, just as a starting point, just so you know.
He's available in two weeks.
From tomorrow, anytime during that Friday to come sit with you, if that works. Well, you can think about it. I'll send you an email, so we can coordinate a date.
Okay, it's, it's a matter of, you know, who's, who's going to be available? You know, like, if Tim's not here, that's Tim, the other Tim T.
Okay, why don't we set a target day for May tenth?
To bring this up again.
To bring it up again.
Okay.
And it can be changed, if for some reason the two of you, or whatever the powers that be, feel like you need more time, then certainly, but at least that's, so we can write that down, okay?
So do you want to table this to May tenth? As far as action in front of the council is concerned? I moved a table to May tenth, the council meeting?
Motion made by Tom Kane, second by Tom Thornton. Everyone understand that motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, none? Five zero zero, okay? Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tim, this is awesome.
And thank you for the work you've done already. We do have to, Eileen, think about how we're going, because it is labeled one eleven conservation areas. I'm not sure how that, would have to be modified.
Change the name. Conservation of town property or something like that.
Okay.
Be part of the process.
Exactly. Okay, we've already done. Okay, we've already done the-
Gross cuts?
Okay, gross cuts was before, anyway. Okay, acceptance of New Hampshire Department of Safety, let's see who's, yes. Safety Homeland Security Emergency Management.
Come on up, Matt.
Grant for, come on up.
Just come up, Matt.
I gotta, I gotta bring it up because I can't remember either, so.
For the Merrimack Police Department, the Town Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security and Emergency Management Grant in the amount of $2,210.68 for training four officers at the 2018 New York Tactical Officers Conference, April 24th to April 27th, 2018. This includes the conference fee of $349.99 and three nights lodging per officer pursuant to R C 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Go right ahead.
I think you just stole my thunder.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay, trust me. Yeah, so-
You can just say what she said.
Okay.
So moved.
So, the containment team is part of the Tactical Officers Association in New Hampshire. And as being a member of that, you become eligible for certain funding through the Department of Homeland Security. Specifically, and I'll say it here, it's the Terrorism Prevention Oriented Activities Grant is, is what this is. It's Special Operations Fund, so we become eligible for that. And it's, it's funding that's available to all the, the tactical teams in the state. And so, a lot of the teams have been going to this conference every year. This will be the first time we send any of our guys to the conference, but it's in New York, it's in Verona. I didn't know where Verona was, but it apparently is between Albany and Rochester. So it's about just over four and a half hour drive. But it's a three-day conference and there's a lot of lectures, there's practical, a lot of good classes on leadership. They have some good debriefs, unfortunate circumstances such as that incident that took place in Las Vegas. Some of our officers are going to be going to a debrief on that. But just really good, excellent leadership training as it relates to what we do, so. We'd really like to be able to send the guys, I think it'd be a great opportunity. Everyone I've talked to that's gone to the conference can't say enough about it, they really, it was a great experience, so.
Questions?
So.
Go right ahead.
Talk, let's talk about cost. I mean, the grant covers $2,200 and it does lodging and their, their conference fee. Do we know anything else about costs for transportation, food, et cetera, salaries and things like that that add up during this time period, or?
Well, the grant will cover the costs and there is also some, there'll be some reimbursement to be had, obviously, on this for backfilling any of the shifts that need to be filled. So with the officers that are going to be away, there's paperwork that I'm going to need to fill out to get reimbursed on the cost of filling those shifts during that timeframe. And any other additional costs that come up. So there is paperwork that I've got from the Department of Homeland Security to include, I have to get the certificates from whatever classes the officers complete, so we can get that, that funding to cover it, so.
So is the entire expense to the town covered by the grant, or?
Yes, it is.
Just this amount of $2,000?
Just that amount of $2,000, but before I understand if there are any overages that we can work with them. I know other departments have in the past, so. Again, this will be a first time for us, but I know that the people that I've been dealing with, the Department of Homeland Security have been really great. And, you know, if, if there is an overage, they're willing to work with us, they told us that, so.
And the paperwork that's involved that you're going to be working with, how much time do you think that's going to take up of yours?
Of my time?
Yeah.
A little bit of time. I mean, like any, anything that's grant-related, it's never simple and easy. It's never quick. But, you know, I, I was able to get through the application, I'm sure previous Captain Albert can attest to this. But they've actually simplified the grant paperwork quite a bit, which was good for me, because I just, I get, you know, the jitters when I hear about grants and applying for grants and so forth, because it's never easy. But actually, this, this grant was very easy to apply for, and the reimbursement paperwork doesn't look too painful either, so. Huh?
We've done it before.
Yeah.
We've worked, we, we know how Homeland Security works now and what they're looking for.
Yeah, I just, for $2,000, I hate to spend $2,000 in, in getting the money. So I, you know, I just want to get an idea of, are we talking about a half a day or an hour, or, or three days of work to try and get it done? And how much does that equate to in cost? And Pete, you may be able to answer that better than others.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, and, and as Matt said, I've done these, we did them before. And Homeland Security gets some cut, it's cookie cutter and they do most of the work. They help you get there, they want us to go, so they help us get it and they make it easier. It used to be, years and years ago, they made it so onerous that we didn't want to do it. So that's, it's, it's not a tough process. I, I don't, I don't question its minimal, minimal cost of anything to Matt's time. I just want to say a couple of things, and one, Matt, or Lieutenant, thanks for doing this because I think this is great training. I've heard of it, I know of it well. Also, can you tell me, I know you can't, you don't name names yet, maybe because you haven't chosen, but what ranks of individuals would be attending this?
Uh, I can mention the names of the officers, actually, because they've, so it's Sergeant Markot is going to be one of them, Detective Sean McGuire. And we have a newer patrolman, Officer Rob Maglio is going to go, and Master Patrolman Mike Lambert, so. A good mix of, we got a supervisor, we got a detective, seasoned patrolman and one of our newer guys, too, so it's a nice mix.
And these are the, as my absent councillor, Rothaus likes to call it, the boots on the ground, they're going to be getting the training, and I think that's awesome.
Good.
Yeah. So when they bring back that training to the PD is, is always a huge asset, too, so. It's, I know the guys are really excited about it, I think it's, it'll be a good thing, so.
Okay, any other questions for Lieutenant Talatin? Nothing. Okay, uh, motion?
I would make a motion that the council, I'd like to say so moved, but I don't think you can go.
You could.
Okay, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
We're going to have to give Bill a little education, right? So, Peter Albert, second by Tom Thornton.
Goes too quick when we do it.
Any other discussions or questions? Saying then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, none, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yep. Let's move number seven. Authorization for Merrimack, oh, yeah, that's it. Merrimack Bedford Intermunicipal Agreement for Sewer Service. Submitted by Assistant Director of Public Work, Roy Swata. Yeah, Jim Taylor, but also by the soon-to-be replacement. Should we even say replacement? How can we replace you, Jim?
No, we can't.
Sarita Croce?
Yeah, like Jim Croce? I don't know if you're up.
Yeah.
Good old Uncle Jim.
The Town Council to consider authorizing the town manager to sign the Merrimack Bedford Intermunicipal Agreement. And I'll let you, the original IMA was expired in April 2016. So go right ahead.
So this request is to replace the original agreement, which expired in 2016. That agreement was actually issued in 1996. The purpose of the agreement is to provide sewer service to a portion of Bedford, known as Greenfield Farms, and to provide sewer service to Merrimack residents located on Pearson Road near the Bedford-Merrimack line. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by attorneys from both the town of Merrimack and the town of Bedford, as well as, as it has gone through extensive review with both DPW departments. So I'd be happy to go over the agreement, go over the changes to the agreement, to the history.
Or not.
Or, or answer questions if you'd like.
What is the pleasure? First of all, I have a question. I already asked it, so there'll be an answer. Expired April 2016, so it's expired, what happened between 2016 and now?
Uh, they agreed to continue the agreement until a new one had been arrai, a new agreement had been arrived at.
So there was, why didn't we have an agreement when this one expired?
I will defer to my esteemed colleague.
See, he thought he was going to get out of it, he's not.
So we were working with the town of Bedford, they, they had some personnel changes, DPW director left. And it, it wasn't an easy process to get them to the table quickly to go through this. But all the conditions that were in the original agreement remained in place. As you know, we did some improvements up there that Bedford had paid for. So that was still in place as we worked towards getting this new agreement.
Okay. So everything was maintained, it was, just wasn't reviewed and, okay.
Exactly.
And there's actually language in there now that states that if the agreement does expire, that all the conditions of the agreement main, are maintained and forced until we arrive at a new agreement.
Excellent.
So that condition has been placed in.
Perfect, Eileen?
I know your department has been working on the disaster on Pearson Road near the pump station. And is this incorporated into this agreement, or does that change any of the, you know, the timeframes on what, and what happens?
It wouldn't change the timeframe on this particular agreement. Because currently, there's 24 homes on Grapevine that are, that are tied into the pump station that's, that's there. And then, when the difficulties are overcome and settled for the three homes at 59 Pearson Road, then they, they will be tied in, too, once the issues are resolved.
Okay, my personal opinion is, obviously, this has been, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing the agreement, but I, I, I don't know enough to be able to question the language. I mean, it seems reasonable to me, but it's something that's been negotiated, and I'm sure legal counsel's looked at it and such. So, what, all you need from us is approval for the town manager to sign it.
That's correct.
Okay, so why don't, are there questions?
Yeah, I just, I want to understand, and also for the public, who may be even more confused than I am, but that's hard to believe. This is an intermunicipal agreement between Merrimack and Bedford for Merrimack to provide services to Bedford residences?
That's correct. So there are about 240 homes in Greenfield Farms that discharge to the Pearson Pump Station, and then we treat that wastewater.
Okay, and then it also talks about residents, Merrimack residences on Pearson Road. Wouldn't we service them anyway?
We do.
So why is that included as part of this intermu, intermunicipal agreement?
I would guess that the, yeah, yours.
It's, it's simply that it, it both funnels down or flows down to the, to the same pump station. So it's equal coverage there. So what we've done is essentially, like the original agreement, there was an area that allocated flow in Merrimack to the pump station. And then the flow that's allocated from Bedford, and then it's, becomes capacity. So you're looking at what we can allow Bedford to have for capacity plus Merrimack development. I hope that answers the question.
Well, yeah, it sort of does, I guess. We're billing Bedford for, for flow, or for just capacity, or for?
So we're billing Bedford, so Bedford, the residents are paying the sewer charge that's normally, normally being billed to Merrimack residents. Then we bill Bedford for 90% of the O and M cost, as well as 90% of the capital costs associated with Pearson. Operation and maintenance costs.
Thank you.
Sorry.
As well as 90% of the maintenance cost of the, of that facility, is that what you said?
Uh, capital cost.
Capital cost.
There is a, a formula that we have that Bedford pays for any of our upgrades to our plant as well, because we're treating their water.
As a result of that.
As a result of their wastewater coming to us. So the total is about $82,000 a year.
Okay.
Pete?
I was reading in here, and I can't find the page, but something about Bedford's expansion in homes, not, it's not, it was approved for 400 homes, but they are significantly lower than that, and, but it, but they're going to expand, is it, did I read that right, am I reading that?
So what we did was we decreased the allocation per home to 200 gallons per home. And that allows for a build-out of 334 homes in Greenfield Farms. Originally, they had received approval for, for 408 homes, so it has been decreased.
Okay. Your question, do you guys, while you're here and we're on this, do you guys see us expanding services to Bedford?
No, the agreement was strictly for that one development on, on the Bedford line. So that, that 334 homes would be the maximum that could be tied in from the town of Bedford.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, and do we expect expansion in Merrimack that's going to use that facility?
That is a great question. Other than the three homes, there aren't any plans that I'm aware of that will be tying into that particular pump station. The, the next phase of Greenfield Farms, that's proposed for the Whispering Pines, that area, will be gravity sewer. So that, that won't be part of this pump station.
Won't be part of the pump station.
Right.
Is gravity sewer into Merrimack, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Eileen?
And is that in Merrimack? Excuse me. Okay.
Sorry, Tom, I interrupted you. It's in the Merrimack?
That's right, yes.
That's what I heard. Thank you.
Okay. Eileen?
So this is, so this is similar to the agreement that we have with the city of Nashua, but in the reverse. So we have, we have an agreement with them where they have a pumping station where we're allowed a certain amount of capacity to service some of Merrimack's homes. And, but once that flow or that capacity has been reached, we no longer can expand it. Is this similar to what the one in Bedford is, which is basically, here's your capacity, you know, this is as much as you will get, period?
That's correct.
Is that down by the South Fire Station? That area that you're talking about?
Uh, it's on the Merrimack, it's down by 101A.
Yeah, 101A.
And Continental Boulevard. Those homes are, yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
I guess, um, go ahead. I thought I recalled that there was a development going into Merrimack that was going to do, do a cross line through some wetlands or something like that, that would feed into Pearson Pump Station, is that?
Yeah, that was, that was the Greenfield Farms development that I referenced, the Phase 14. And that particular project will be installing gravity sewer. And then there's actually existing pipe down near Bedford Road that's been extended up Pearson Road, and they'll be tying in at that point.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Can I attend a motion to provide permission for the town manager to approve?
So Madam Chair, I will move to authorize the town manager to sign the Merrimack Bedford Intermunicipal Agreement.
Not easy to say, is it?
No.
Okay, motion made by, motion made by Tom Thornton, second by Tom Keenick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, none, five zero zero. And Jim, I just want to make a note, I'm sure you're going to be back here upon leaving.
Yes, I will.
But Jim only has 26 days left?
26 working days.
Working days.
Working days.
We're all pretty devastated.
Not that he's counting or anything. But if I don't say personally, I want to thank you for the use of service you've put in here, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
It's been, it's been a great job, I've enjoyed every minute of it, so thank you for your support over the years.
Every minute?
Well, almost every minute. Except for when things go wrong.
During the Mother's Day flood, when you-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
That was one time I didn't enjoy it.
I have to say that everybody at the plant's going to miss him terribly, and he is probably the best boss I've ever had in my career, so I'm going to miss him, too.
I had to pay her to say that.
He still does my-
Here's the money.
Her job is facing behind you leaving. Eileen?
I just wanted to tell a little story about when I first started working here about seven years ago. I received a formal invitation from the wastewater treatment plant to attend an ice cream sundae event in the plant. And I declined, although I did go to the Mexican thing later on and survived it. So, I really appreciate-
You do have to build a tolerance.
Really, really, you have been absolutely fantastic. Can't tell you how, what a valued employee you have been. And I would very much like to congratulate us and Sarita on her promotion.
Oh, thank you.
Very, very happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, okay, you better run while you can.
I heard that Eileen was changing the air in her tires when she, you know, couldn't come to the ice cream social.
Oh, was that the excuse?
Oh, oops, I forgot that one.
At least she wasn't falling out of her chair.
Thank you very much, both of you.
I was polishing my hand irons.
Okay, item number five. Okay, item number five. Appreciation plaque discussion, follow-up from December 21st, town council meeting, submitted by me, Ann Finley. Town council to discuss the cost options and language for plaques that will be given to the entities that provide ongoing support to the town. Now, if you remember, I had a little notes myself, if you remember, we had, this was in response to a group, I can't remember who it was, who every year.
DCU.
That's right, exactly, thank you, Tom. And I had made a comment at that time, that I know we send out rule appreciation sort of certificates, but for the continuous repetitive kind of circumstances, that people are exceptionally generous, and they constantly, and I thought, there should be a little bit more kind of representation. So we, Becky had made this up, and I'm going to pass it around. This is the kind of plaque we're talking about, and I'll pass it around. I'll hold it for the camera. Hello, camera? Like Vienna White. Where there would be, where there would be specific language written up, and, but, and I believe there was supposed to be suggested language. The price would be $60 per plaque. And there was, the suggested language isn't there, we were supposed to get suggested language, right?
What's this metal?
It's a black, yeah, I don't know, but you engrave on it.
The town seal is pewter, but the other pieces, probably just a blank.
Yeah, there was no language, I thought they were going to submit some language, right? I thought they had. But basically, we probably should make decisions about, one, do we want to do that? Two, under what circumstances? Would it be repetitive? Would it be a certain amount of money or not? Not that it has to be. Regardless of what we've set up for a procedure, we should probably have any of the circumstances not covered by the above, whatever we decide that to be, deemed appropriate by the vote of the town council. There may be an event or circumstance that is not based upon whatever we define as criteria, that we would want to be able to have that open. Pete?
Yeah, so you're saying, I mean, obviously, if they, we set a parameter or something, but a significant donation to assist the town, but also maybe, I don't know, also, and think this is where you're going with it, Nancy, is a good deed, or some action that assists the town in some manner or way, not only just financially, but helps the people overall.
Or it should be the benefit?
Yes.
Let's write this down, benefit, since we don't have the word, benefit to the citizens of the town of Merrimack. Does that sound?
The town of Merrimack, I mean, that is.
To the town of Merrimack. Wait, we try, this is called, faking it?
Yeah, I'm curious, is, is the $60 for the plaque, or does that include one standard engraving, so that that's how we order these plaques? Or, so let's say we have a specific situation, and we want to tailor this particular tack, plaque, excuse me, to that situation?
We can do it that way.
And that would be the $60?
Well, it says price includes mounting seal and engraved plaque.
And engraved plaque.
Okay, yeah, I'm just kind of.
And we can.
Sounds like you can customize the engraving each time.
Correct.
So maybe, maybe that's what we do, I don't know.
I would like to think we wouldn't formalize it so much that we have to have the same words on it. Sometimes it seems a little redundant when we give people recognition plaques, and they say exactly the same thing for every individual and every person.
It'd be nice to make it personable.
Okay. Yes, Eileen?
It does make it more difficult.
I asked Sharon if that was, that black space was actually a chalkboard.
Well, it looks like a chalkboard, because it's, yeah.
That way, yes, but, you know, as, as you have been referring to, there are certain donations that are made every single year, and have been for years. They might not be large amounts, but, for instance, without naming any names, there's a party that, that donates money for scholarships to the, to the camp every single year, so that a child or two may be able to go to the camp, to the Wasserman Park Camp for free. So those kinds of things, I think, you know, a one-time appreciation would be appropriate.
And, and I agree with the town manager that that individual, for situations like that, is well overdue for something from the council, but, and I guess, I would look for guidance from you and the staff to, to say to us, hey, this individual here has helped us out. It may be something that's not on our radar, and.
Exactly. So maybe we don't have to define it per se, is what you're suggesting?
But you like the plaque?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Just listen, you know, I just, in appreciation for, and your continuous work to the town of Merrimack, given by the town, given by the Merrimack Town Council on such and such a day, but you can also then change.
Personalize it.
Personalize the top, and just put, given by the town of Merrimack, given by the Merrimack Town Council on such and such a day, but you can personalize appreciation for the benefit of, and you can change that, but.
And with, like the circumstance with you, we could say.
Right.
For continued sponsorship of.
Yeah, right, you could, you could change the first sentence to say, whatever, but then you can go on and keep the rest in that realm. As long as it fits on that black plaque, which it should.
Yes, sure.
And you don't want the writing to be so small that you got to run up to the plaque to read it. So you want to try to keep the words kind of at a minimum.
So basically, we're just approving the procedure of acquiring the plaques, and then the decision of who's going to receive them, how is that done?
Turned by recommendation.
An individual approved at the council meeting.
Okay, there you go. There you go, okay. Because I wanted, I wanted a procedure.
I think you need, though, it should go out without the council voting on it, so.
Okay.
They're coming from you.
Perfect. So what you're suggesting is?
I don't know whether that's perfect.
Go ahead, go ahead, why? Go ahead.
First of all, I'm sorry, I want to just commend this, this is gorgeous, this plaque with pewter is such a.
Classy.
Really. Anybody would be proud to get that. Here we go back to this, oh, I'm, sorry.
That's all right, no problem.
Your mic's not on?
Public vote on.
Your mic?
Oh, sorry, here we go on this public vote again, on, that you would actually maybe vote no in public, that somebody shouldn't get one, and, or we shouldn't vote if there's that, that possibility? Somehow, I don't know whether this can be done in a, in a private session, something like this, because I have felt several times that I would like to vote no, but no way am I going to vote no with a family sitting all the way.
That's a great point.
Yeah, and I wanted to somehow stop that.
You know how we do the obituary things?
Yeah, the red.
Yes and no?
The red folder.
On the sign file?
Mm-hmm.
How would you feel about that, if we had a sign file?
Oh, I think that's fine.
Where we go yes or no, and then the majority vote, and therefore the action would be determined.
So we can say no if, if, if we think really it's fitting, because that is special. We all recognize that that is very special, like a 10-year thank you for, you know, Mr. and Mrs., you know, wealthy donor, to send a kid to camp every month. The other thing that I wanted to say in public now, I think it's appropriate, is that I've, I've hung all the pictures in the memorial room that I have, which is kind of few, really, and I would like some way to tactfully publicize that we would like more, that the criteria are kind of, you know, plain, that, that somebody has to be dead for five years, being the first and most important, and that they.
Pictures, what kind of pictures? Describe, of people?
Oh, well, that's an interesting thing. If somebody wants to come up with something creative, I'm sure that we would consider it. Somebody who has done.
Historic.
Things for Merrimack, that they might be wonderfully successful business people, or something like that, but we were more interested in honoring somebody who did a lot for the town.
So why, why you got the floor, you made a plug?
I made a plug because it kind of plays into that.
Fits into that.
Because, again, we wanted the opportunity to say no.
So how do people feel about that signing?
No, thank you.
How, how does the council?
Or thank, oh, no thank you.
Pete?
Oh, I'm sorry, the walls are taken.
I like Jackie's idea, but I, you know, the memorial room is a room that not a lot of people see, and it's funny, because when I stand in line for my registrations on my car, I look at all those pictures on the walls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, everything there.
It's fun, yeah.
I'll tell you, maybe that's the location that you, we show these.
Put some of those.
People are historical figures and so forth, because how many people, we're all standing there looking at the ceiling, the wall, and that's not to say that the folks in the clerk's office are not working hard, but, you know.
They are, but you're in line.
Well, we can certainly break our.
Might be able to rotate some through.
We can, absolutely.
Much like the historical society does with their, their.
I love that, yeah, I love that. Oh, yeah, we could do whatever, but right now, I'm kind of interested in inventory, right now.
So to get back to the plaque?
Yes.
Even though the memorial.
So does everyone agree that they, they sign? Yes, no, would take care of the decision, and after recommendation is made?
I think we should, we should get some kind of an idea or feeling before bringing it up in public.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So, back to this sign-in, the donation, DCU gives $3,000 to police and fire every year. We come forward, do you want the sign-in sheet that night, or were you going to want the sign-in shite, like, sign-in sheet, like, the next meeting, so you guys can say yes or no, whether or not to offer a plaque?
Well, I don't think the timeline is particularly an issue, because it's usually not a due date for anything, right?
Okay.
So we have a little bit.
It ought to be at least a meeting before we try to.
Oh, yes, agree. But I mean, it doesn't have to be within a strict timeline, but.
I'm just trying to figure out when. Because the worst thing to go on is that they're in front of you, and somebody says, and give them a plaque.
Oh, I agree.
And now you're voting on the plaque, and we don't have the sign-in sheet.
That's exactly the point. In fact, might I recommend that, once a recommendation's made, recommended verbiage be put on that, because, and then each counselor will be able to make a suggestion in terms of any revisions. That would take care, and then, if you have the majority, you could have the plaque made, and you already know the language that could be put on.
And put it on the appropriate agenda.
Yeah.
Right, and then, once that's determined, then it could be an agenda, perfect. So could we start with the?
DCU.
DCU?
Yeah.
Does that process, it sound okay to everybody?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm very happy, I'm gonna, I'm glad that's being done.
Peter's idea.
That's right, it was your idea, Peter.
So you get a plaque? Huh? Or my picture, do I get a choice?
Yeah, we'll put it in the memorial room.
Or my picture.
Oh, we'll put it in the memorial.
He's a hard driver.
Peter.
Five years after.
Peter, yeah.
I heard Jackie say that.
Five years.
Once you're dead, five years.
We can make it five years from now, but you realize what has to happen.
You could give the picture now, we could hold it.
We just want, we just want that. Who'll remember, who's going to be around to hold on to it?
Not me.
But, yeah, Peter, it was your idea, and I'm glad that you came up with it. I hope you appreciate that, we think it's a great one, so, thank you.
No, it, everybody got together, it's great, staff, the council, it's nice, it's a nice idea, and, you know, since I've been on the council, and even over the years I worked for the town, people do some great things for this town. Between their, their actions, their deeds, and then, you know, financial support sometimes on these different programs.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, last but not least, revised fund balance policy. Town council to accept the updated fund balance policy to include new definition as it relates to the governmental accounting standards board's statement number 54, Mr. McKelley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We always had a fund balance policy, we used to call it the unreserved fund balance policy, and through the government financial board's statement 54, which basically is the bible that our auditors go by when they audit us, some of the definitions have changed, such like, unreserved is now one, is restricted, and then there's, they expanded the number of categories of fund balance to include non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and then unassigned. So in order to get our policy up to date with the auditors, I've made the changes, as you can see, to the definitions. The policy itself doesn't change, we're still between 4 and 8%. We still have the same basic recommended utilizations of emergency appropriations that are spelt out in RSA 3211, capital projects, transfer to capital reserve funds, reduction in taxes, and other capital projects, so deemed by the council as, as non-recurring. And then, what I had to do was, I had to do a spending prioritization, going committed, assigned, and then unassigned, if any of those recommendation, recommended utilizations are used, so.
So it's really updating responding to the change in definitions.
Changes in definitions.
Eileen?
So, could you, could you give us some examples of which, of the undesignedated is now called.
Unassigned.
Unassigned, okay, so that's what we normally think of it as undesignedated. But for instance, like, what would the mall money be, that $650,000 that we have set aside? What, what category would that one be under?
That is, could go underneath two. It could go underneath assigned fund balance, meaning that the amounts by the government intend for use for a specific purpose, or restricted amounts constrained for a specific person, purpose by their providers. So it's either restricted or assigned. So that $650,000 is set aside in either one of those two fund categories.
Just one more question. So, the encumbered fund balance, meaning those expenditures that have already been, purchase orders have been ordered, and the council has already authored, authorized those purchases in the prior year's budget, but we haven't received them, that's called, it used to be called an encumbrance to the fund balance, which basically set that aside for those purposes, even though we hadn't spent the money.
Encumbrances, right.
What is, what are the encumbrances now being called as far as?
Assigned.
Assigned, okay, thank you.
Which makes more sense, because they're assigned to something already, yeah, okay. Any other questions? So are we, we need a motion to accept the updated fund balance policy?
Correct.
Please.
And thank you.
Motion? To accept the updated fund balance policy?
I move to accept the updated fund balance po, uh, fund balance policy to include the new definitions as it relates to the governmental accounting standards board, statement number 54.
It's not a fund balance, it's a fund balance.
Fund, that's why I said fund balance.
Motion made by Tom Thornton, seconded by.
Second.
Too late, Peter. By Tom Keenick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, non 500. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say.
No, you don't.
Now, rest bill when we need them.
Minutes, yeah, you have too much for them. Minutes, February 15th, 2008. Everyone was in attendance that evening?
No, I wasn't.
Yes, you were.
Oh, me too.
It wasn't the recent one.
Says you were present.
Says you were present.
Yeah, right.
Okay, any, I need a motion?
I didn't have a chance to look.
Do you want to table, are people? I haven't even got a motion yet. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the town council meeting on February 15th, 2008.
Motion made by Peter Albert, seconded by.
I'll second.
Tom Thornton. Are there corrections? I did, could take a quick look, I did not see. I did take a quick look. I did not see anything. Great. No corrections. Okay, so we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any abstaining? None. 5-0-0. Comments from the press? There's nobody here, so that's press door public. Comments from the council? Anything interesting to say?
No, I mean, the planning board did meet recently, and we talked with one commercial property owner, and we're working with him to try and get his site plan into compliance. Other than that, we haven't done any extensive work. I mean, we got kind of carried away with a couple of things with the Merrimack Premium Outlets, parcel A, and things like that, which did get approved. And so, at the moment, we're still working with other things along the way.
Yes, Ellie?
May I ask Tom a question?
Should I say no? Go ahead.
She's in charge here until further designated. So, what I wanted to, it's probably old, very old information, but I was just curious about the company Spraying Systems. Did they actually take over the, what was it called?
GT Solar.
GT Solar property, or it was probably not a change of use or anything?
Because it was probably not a change of use. It didn't come before a planning board approval.
Okay.
So, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Well, I think it's a very good company and a very surprising size and prestigious company to have in town, so I'm going to get that information from Tim Thompson and give more on it. I go by it every day, and I say, I keep saying, is that GT Solar's old building? And are they, are they still active there in any capacity?
Yeah, I don't think so.
New signs across the residence, GT Solar.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a new company in there.
Spraying Systems, yes. Okay, all right, that's all.
Okay, a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie.
A very small thing from the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
That's something that won't be coming before this council. A boy scout wants to be an Eagle Scout, and he's going to build, or he's planning to build, an overlook at Greater Woods, where if you ever just walk, just that first, that first path down to the pond, if, when you turn left to go up the hill a little bit, the track team goes there, there will be a, quite a sizable deck. I think around 10 by 12 or something like that, it looks like in the picture, with nice railings and little steps to go up it to equalize the heights, and benches so people can take it up.
Well, they have to come before us, right? Eagle.
No, because it's on school land.
The overlooking? Was I...
It's the land owned by the school district.
It's the school district land.
It's a school.
This council will be...
I thought we had approved a plan for a deck with seating and steps up to it.
No, because he thought he still had to do it. He was asking.
All right, well, there was something that we saw.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
It was a trick.
No, you're right. There was one that's built. But I came, going to Kitty, he was putting a 3D model.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is a different gentleman.
This is a different one.
Yeah, this is different. I just wanted to tell you, because it's a nice, a nice thing.
Cool. It's amazing the kind of things they do for those projects. It's been so useful, so helpful. I know. I know. Isn't that great? No, if it's not required, it's the school district, so they're the ones who have to sign them off, right?
Conservation Commission.
Okay, fine, then, no.
She scares me.
But I would encourage them to go to the school department. Okay, I have motion to adjourn. We better be...
I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Tom Thornton, second by Tom Koenig. All those in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.